And welcome to the Rayville School Board Meeting for Independence. Today is Thursday, September 13th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. And we are being at the District Service Center in the Capitol, Minnesota. 1.0 is...
Here.
Michelle Whitty.
Here.
Heidi Short.
There.
Sharon Van Leer.
Here.
2.0, please stand and join us in...
...the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
3.0 is the approval of our agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve. By Sharon, second by me. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
4.0, our district highlights. That will be an agenda item for our September 20th meeting. By Boito, public comment. That will also be an agenda item for our September 20th meeting. 6.0, our consent items. All consent items are considered routine and non-tro현상 by the school board. And will be approved by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. But prior to the meeting, board members had the opportunity to review them and could have requested that one be moved to an agenda item. Seeing that we had not, um, this meeting, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent item. Second by Sharon, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 7.0, our workshop item. 7.1 is our Park High School Inventor Space, which we're very excited about. And we will introduce our principal, sorry. Okay. So our Park High School Principal, Ginger Garsky. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Brunet, board members. That's okay. Principal, it's okay. Well, I didn't have a pie in the face today, but...
Okay.
Uh, anyway, just want to welcome everybody and our distinguished guests. Uh, this evening, we wish to highlight an element of District 833's career and technical education progress from our past school year, and a few CTE/STEM partnerships to enhance our students' learning and career exploration at Park High. First of all, Jody Witt will share the background of this innovative pathway for teaching and learning and career and college readiness. Then, Principal Ginger Garsky will illustrate the specific items necessary for us to support this outstanding opportunity. We will then introduce our special guests from the Anderson Corporate Foundation, the Endeavor Foundation, St. Paul Park Refinery, thanking them for their tremendous investment tonight. And finally, our community partners will describe what it means, what it means to invest and why they invest in STEM education and South Washington County schools. I will now pass this off to Jody Witt.
About two years ago, I got a phone call from Anderson Corporation. And they invited me to talk to Park High School to create an inventor space at their school. So you can imagine, as the grant coordinator, I was like excited, very excited. Um, it happened to be, I think, in June when we got the call. And I contacted Ms. Garsky, who I think had just been offered the principal job at Park High School. And she said to me, "Well, Jody, that sounds like a great opportunity, but can we wait till I can get in my office? So we can explore this further." So we were really excited. And that fall, we got together. We got some, Ginger got some teachers together, the key teachers. Um, we got a district team together with TLS and Community Ed went with us. And we got to meet our partners with Anderson. They came to Park High School so we could get to really talk with each other from their foundation, from their corporation, and from Renewal by Anderson here in Cottage Grove. So at that point, we talked about manufacturing and what they do. And we got to learn about the skill sets that they were looking for and what they had hoped to work with Park High School for. Um, and our teachers got to talk about Park High School. And Ginger got to share her kind of new vision for what she'd like and to learn about a fab lab, because that was pretty new for us. I had heard about the fab lab, fabrication lab, because I remember in about 2011, Mottamidei School District was, I believe, the first to have a true fab lab out of MIT. And that was really high-tech equipment. And the kids got to manufacture, they got to design and manufacturing using really high-tech equipment. More than the old shop, shops that we had at our schools, but a true fab lab. At that point, we got excited. We got, we knew that we really wanted to bring this opportunity to Park High School. So we actually went and toured Renewal by Anderson. They invited us to their facility here in Cottage Grove. We got to see what modern manufacturing looked like with the combination of people and lots of machines, and also with robots. That was new for us, to see those robots in action. So we got to learn a little bit. They were very, you know, very approachable with us. They talked about what they were looking for. And we got to talk about Park High School and the district. At that point, we knew that we had to go look at fab labs. So we went to Mottamidei, we went to Stillwater. And especially Bonnie Tho Austin, the lead teacher on this, she got excited when she saw Mottamidei and, and their model that they had. This was for all kids, just not for the techies, but for all kids. So she got to sketch it out and put the equipment that she wanted in there that we knew could be sustainable. And that was a directive that we got from Julie Nielsen at the time. Got to keep this sustainable and workable so that we can continue into the future. We, um, we continued on that path with Anderson and kept talking to them. We kept that team in place. And then we started talking about CTE last year, and what CTE means in our district. And so our vision from a fab lab expanded and went beyond that to looking at a pathway, a manufacturing pathway that could offer credentials for our kids while they're in high school, some sort of industry certificate. It could be stackable credentials. But it would help our kids be more ready for if they want to go to a two-year college, a four-year college. Could also offer an opportunity to go right to work and work their way up if they wanted to and access some of the benefits that our companies offer with college reimbursement. So we got excited about that. And Ginger's going to talk about that vision for that manufacturing pathway. We also knew with our budget, um, we had been, Anderson was very generous. We would get about $75,000 over three years. But our budget was more than that. It was about $115,000 at minimum for the equipment. So we approached the St. Paul Park Refinery. Ken Atkinson is, has strong been supporting Park High School and their robotics team. And he said, "Well, why don't you come present to our contributions team?" So we were able to go there. They got excited about what Park High School is doing. And so we worked with him through their new person, their community relations person. And we were able to access funding from their Endeavor Foundation, which is in Texas. And we had some phone calls with their executive director down in Texas. We also approached 3M. And they've long supported STEM and lots of different programs in our schools, including our robotics teams. Um, they're funding some other things for our district, which we hope to talk about in a couple months. But they helped us get to that, that $115,000 mark. So we're able to get the equipment. We celebrated, very excited. And we're very excited tonight that the partners could be here as well. Um, I'm just going to give a shout out for one more thing, and that's PPG. Mindy Sax, who's sitting, is also a Park High School grad and lives in the community. And she worked with PPG, who is Renewals, Renewal by Anderson and Anderson Corporation's paint supplier. And they wanted to bring their Colorful Communities project to Minnesota. So Mindy advocated for Park High School. So we were able to get a $5,000 grant from PPG along with about $3,000 of supplies and materials and about 50 excited volunteers that came to prep, paint, and clean up at Park High School. So it's been a long journey, and we're super excited to be here, that this class is going to kick off in December. I wanted to show, to end on this slide, that this was pretty much our foundation, and it's going to be our success indicators as well. This, the fab lab is about a different way of teaching and learning. It invites playing and tinkering and making mistakes and figuring things out. It invites innovation and relevance. Um, also, we talked about employability and living wages in a different economy. We want our kids, it's no longer enough to have a certificate or sometimes even a college degree. Our employers need education, highly skilled people, plus that skill. And we know that this will provide the technical skills we want. And we hope some credentials as well. And we're focusing on our community. Um, all three of these employers are in our community. They want to support Park High School. And it was fun to see them get excited about being at Park High School and seeing what's happening there as well. So I'm going to turn this over to Ginger, who's going to talk a little more specifics.
This schematic is a diagram of what we hope the room will, or what the room will look like. And you can see that there are lots of places to collaborate. We really feel strongly about that, that it's not enough just to learn the technical skills. You have to learn the people skills part of it as well, how to work together and to solve problems. I already have several things that I'm excited about talking with the kids once we get up and running that hopefully they'll be able to do for us with the vinyl cutters, the 3D printers, all the different things that they're going to be able to have access to. It's exciting because the school will feel even more like it is our own at the same time that the kids are really developing some really technical and wonderful skills that will prepare them for the real world. It is really, um, I think Park High School is a really special place because we are so community-based and focused. A lot of our current students are kids whose parents and sometimes grandparents have gone to Park. There's that just generational feel about it. And I feel like that's part of what, um, our community or our corporate sponsors are doing with us now, too. They're supporting us in our current ventures and the things that we're trying to work on with our kids because they see our kids as their future. And, um, it's very humbling. It's really a wonderful thing to have this partnership. The work we did together this summer, the painting work, felt very community-focused and really exciting. Right now, the room itself, the inventor space, has, the machinery is starting to come in. My partner here, Jody Witt, really was amazing to work with. And little by little, we had to, Daniel will be happy to know that we felt we had to wait till we had all the funds. So now, we're ordering all of the things that we need. And so we'll have this first trimester to put the shop in place and actually start the class trimester, too. And that, that, too, is exciting. And I think it'll be great for the kids to see that happen. Um, that wasn't the plan, but I think it's a happy accident, maybe, that it's going to happen while they're there. But, um, they've been part of little pieces of the whole process recently. Um, and that's, I know for another time. But we've got a beautiful mural in our Community Inclusion Center that the kids designed and painted. And that, too, was because of Anderson and the Colorful Communities program. And it just has really been a wonderful, wonderful community feel to all of this. And, uh, once we are all up and running, then I hope that we can come with... We had two teachers who were trained this summer. Um, as, um, Jody mentioned, Bonnie Tho Austin is our lead teacher. But Matt Maher also went to three full weeks of training this summer. And so they're pretty excited about getting it all in place as well. And then, once we're up and running, we'd like to come with some of the kids and show you some photos. And, and, uh, we'd like our partners to be able to see our progress, too, as we go.
Do you want to just touch on this?
Yes. Um, this, this slide shows that the progression of what it is that we're trying to do. Um, we're starting, we're obviously year one. The course we're beginning with is how to make anything or almost anything. And therefore, the, the reason for the collaborative space, to work together, to solve problems, and to be creative and inventive. And that's the beginning of it. But we've already started working with our math and science folks to help support those skills, those math and science skills, so that the kids really have something to bring to the table when they do this problem solving. Year two will be, um, continuing to refine those skills and to really start to begin to talk about, well, what career does this match up with? And as we keep going, um, we hope to have the, a true manufacturing pathway so that when kids finish, um, they'll, you know, be ready for an apprenticeship, that they'll, um, have stackable credentials, as is indicated here, so that they really will be able to go out into the workforce, if that's what they choose, with some genuine skills. Or perhaps they'll want to go on to college. But, um, it'll be that good marrying of kids with a whole range of skills. Future engineers as well as, um, technical workers at, working together.
So, um, there's, there's some... We had the check presentation earlier this evening, and we have large checks. Which, we can't wait to share those pictures because, um, the money is, is very much needed and very helpful for us. And so I want to recognize our partners, because it couldn't have happened without Anderson Corporation, the Anderson Foundation, Renewal by Anderson, and with our refinery and the foundation there. 3M was not able to be here tonight. And I want to give a shout out to PPG because all of those have contributed. Um, you can see $50,000 from the Anderson Corporate Foundation, Renewal by Anderson. Um, and we are crossing our fingers for an additional $25,000 come January 1st. Um, the Endeavor Foundation, St. Paul Park Refinery was $50,000, $10,000 from 3M, and $5,000 from PPG. And that got us to what we needed to for our equipment. Um, we also have $15,000 of district funds from Perkins, from, for the teacher training. And Park High School is contributing some, too, for the drops and the different technical things that are needed. So, um, that total comes to $130,000. And we need also some supplies and materials. So hopefully, when we get $25,000 additional from Anderson, we can, um, purchase those things as well. So most exciting thing is to have our partners here today. So they're each going to talk for five minutes. And they're going to talk about supporting Park High School and the inventor space. So first of all, I'm going to introduce, um, from Anderson, Paul De La Hunt is here. But I'm also going to give a shout out to Mindy Sax, who's sitting over there. And Alika Rojides is also here. So Paul's going to talk a little bit first.
All right. I think I've got one here. Do I have to pick it up, or can you just hear me? It's good? All right. Uh, well, good, thanks, Jody. Uh, good evening, board members and school leaders and members of the community. So I'm Paul De La Hunt, President of Renewal by Anderson. Mindy Sax really did all the work behind this. I'm just like the pretty face. But on behalf of Renewal and Anderson's Corporate Foundation, we're extremely proud to present the $50,000 grant to Park High School to support development of your STEM inventor space. You know, STEM programs like this play a key role in increasing science literacy and developing critical thinkers and, you know, skilled technical workers that we need. Uh, when we invest in STEM education, we're investing in future leaders and providing the students of today the resources they need to excel in some of the most in-demand, uh, career fields. So this, this is very important to our society, I think, overall. But I would say selfishly, it's also important to us. Uh, Renewal by Anderson, right here in Cottage Grove, this is our home, our home market. And, uh, you know, we need people. You all know the unemployment rate's very low. And finding skilled people is a, is a critical priority for us. You know, many careers in different areas at Anderson and Renewal utilize STEM-related skills, uh, from working with the highly advanced robotics technology we use, to our engineers, uh, who are designing innovative window products, uh, for the future. Uh, but also a lot of technical roles, uh, maintenance technicians and quality technicians and things like that, where people have to be comfortable with, uh, you know, technical fields. So it's not all degreed engineers, is I guess what I'm saying. And establishing this partnership, we can better prepare students for their career. And we can find our future teammates of tomorrow right here in our own backyard. Uh, in addition to the grant, as you've heard, Anderson and Renewal employees also participated in the PPG Colorful Communities Program. And over the summer, many of our teammates helped repaint several classrooms here at Park High School. Uh, I know what color paint they used, because when they came back, they all had green hands. So I guess it must be the park color. But seriously, you know, we share the community of Cottage Grove with Park High School. Some of our best employees are Park graduates. Mindy is a prime example. Uh, we have lots of folks who are sending their kids to Park. So, you know, we're just very happy to continue our longstanding commitment to making a positive impact in the communities where we live and work. That's a long Anderson tradition. But this is something new. You know, Dr. Jacobus was saying, if you guys ever done this before, and I don't think we really have. Uh, but, you know, finding qualified workers is a key priority. And we were just talking about, I said, we can sit around and whine about it, or we can actually do something about it and invest in it and help create the workers of the future. Uh, and they're good jobs, right? Uh, this isn't, we're not talking fast food here, right? So it's important to us, and we're glad to be able to participate. So thank you.
Next, I'm going to introduce, um...
Sorry, Eric.
St. Paul Park Refinery. Eric Bonner is a tech service manager from St. Paul Park Refinery. And Ken Atkinson is a senior training specialist, also at St. Paul Park Refinery. And I'm going to give a shout out to the Endeavor Foundation, too.
Yeah.
There you go. Can everyone hear me? This one on?
Here, try this one.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Here, try this one.
All right. Everyone hear me? Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us here. Um, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the Endeavor Foundation to start with. So the Endeavor Foundation, um, it's a corporate, uh, activity and group that runs out of our San Antonio office. Uh, we here, um, Ken and I both work in the refinery down the road here. And our foundation is committed to collaborating in our communities. And we work with the stakeholders in our communities to help create a cleaner, safer, better-educated community, right? So we, too, have a lot of people that come from the community, work at our, our facility. Um, so what that foundation typically invests in is what our core values are, which is around safety, the environment, and people, right? And so this is a perfect investment in people, um, also in the community. Um, over time, this foundation has grown, and we've continued to grow our investments. And we're, we're excited to be here with you guys tonight and be able to contribute. Um, STEM education is obviously something that's important to us. I manage a group of technical folks, um, not only engineers, but also technicians and chemists. And so we have a lot of different trades that work in our facility. And so it's really important for us to, to be creating that future generation of folks that are going to step in and, and help fill those roles. Um, and by partnering with, with, uh, this school district and specifically Park High School here, we're better able to prepare students for that academic and life success that we want to see people have. Um, we hope that the, the activities that go on in this space help, like, get people excited about math and science, right? So my group, we, we probably can be a little bit nerdy, and we get excited about it, right? We go to work every day, and we love what we do. We love problem solving. We love coming up with creative... We love coming up with creative solutions, and that's what we hope a space like this helps kids get that passion for innovation and creative thinking. You know, engineering isn't always just doing the math. A lot of times, you've got to think outside the box, and this is a great way to help people do that. And this isn't just about either engineering either, right? It's the trades, and we need those too, right? Electricians, instrument techs, welders, like, the list goes on and on. We use them all. So, it's important that people are getting excited and involved in those things. I'm going to turn it over to Ken, because Ken's been involved in this journey for a long time, and he also has done a lot to represent our facility and a lot of the other programs that we help support around the district. So, turn it over to Ken here.
Thank you all. It's our great pleasure to, you know, make this initial donation, and hopefully, we'll continue to support this particular project in the future. And we're delighted to be partnered with a longstanding member of the community, the Anderson Window and PPG. The folks are great, and, you know, we were just talking, we've been in the community more than 80 years, so it's not like a business that's here today, gone tomorrow. Some of you may not recognize the St. Paul Park Refinery. You drive by it probably every day, going down 61, and don't even pay attention to it. It's just another industrial facility that you pass by. We have the same struggles, though, that the Anderson Window folks have. They're a little bit more out there in the public's eye. We're a little bit behind the scenes. One of the things that you might see in our company is the Super America stations. So, if you've fueled up there, that is part of our group. We have a local bakery here in St. Paul Park also. So, we employ a number of folks, and we're all hurting in the, you know, the technical skills part of it. And that's why I think that it was so exciting when Bonnie and Megan came to our committee over a year ago and pitched this to us. They did such a super job, because what hit us, I think, the most was that they made a connection between the sciences and the skills. And for a lot of folks, and all these students in Park, because I get to work with a lot of them in the robotics program, they have that difficult connection, and when you see the light bulbs come on, when they take the math skills that they've learned and match it up to a physical skill that they can accomplish something, it's a wonderful thing, and we're hoping this inventor space will be that place that they can all come together as a community and grow. We really need to have more and more of the kids involved with this program. And again, this isn't a strict, hey, we're going to send these kids to school to be chemical engineers, not that we don't need chemical engineers, but we, you know, my piece of it is, if you didn't catch it, I'm an educator, but I'm educating all the craft people. So, I've got electricians and welders and rotating equipment machinists, you name it. We're trying to gather those folks and attract them to our business. We're in competition with the Anderson Windows on trying to bring those people in. What a wonderful thing if we can get those here locally, instead of going outward and looking, you know, not just in the Twin City area, but we're talking across the country trying to bring people in. And so, for us, this is a really exciting thing. One of the things I wanted to mention is, we've gone through a number of changes at the refinery, and when they came to us a year ago, and it's unfortunate, we weren't ready to really commit to the money, because we were being a purchase by Endeavor. And so, that became a little bit of a problem for us, but we're very proud that Endeavor saw the same value we did at the committee level, and they carried it forward. So, it's been a wonderful thing. Just to let you know, we've invested this year $150,000 in your school district. So, if you didn't know that, you now know. We're serious. We want to make sure that we make a sound investment. We've invested in the last three years just shy of $3 million in the local community. So, we're giving back, but we're also, just like everyone else, we're trying to set a road for these students to come to our business and, you know, see that, hey, this is a good place to work, a good place to raise families, and, you know, I've got five grandchildren in this school district, so I'm hoping that, you know, this will last a long time. So, again, thank you very much. We really appreciate everything that, you know, that you guys have done, because you've stayed with it. You've stayed the course, and, you know, we applaud you for doing that. And again, I think the pitch that was made to us hit us all at the heart, and I think, you know, kudos to the school district for that. Thank you.
Yes, at this time, we'd like to take, oh, if Dr. Jacobus wants to speak, but any questions from the board? Go ahead, Dr. Jacobus.
I was just wondering, Ginger, as far as what would you imagine the typical project? I know that they're going to start with Make Anything, but do we have an idea?
Well, one of the things that I want to do, sort of beyond, is you can purchase, we need a logo at the front of the building and of the Wolfpack, and you can work with different companies to create that for you. I want us to create our own. I think that would be great, and I know that some schools also do the same kind of thing with vinyl appliques that they put on the walls, because it doesn't damage the walls, and it's more long-lasting, it's color-fast, all those kinds of things. And right now, we have a lot of construction paper at Park High School. It'll be great if we can do some of that work, the kids themselves. But I think it's going to go way beyond that, and the design of the room that we showed earlier, that the teachers came up with, hopefully, they will work together. I think they, you know, that Jody's term tinker is an important part of it, that I hope kids will be interested and want to see how the different machinery works and to truly tinker and figure out some things, experiment with what they can do.
If you just keep in mind that Dan could use a better driver for his game, maybe they could have.
Yeah.
I want to say I'm excited. A couple of years ago, I toured an inventor space in Colorado, and this sounds very similar to that, and they did just what you said, Ginger. They were making a lot of the signs and a lot of the stuff for the school, and it was nice, because it had little, like, it wasn't just a plain sign. It had something that was unique, and the kids could walk around, and they wouldn't be like, I made that sign. And it was just amazing what they were doing. That district actually started at the high school like this, but then had a middle school and then a more simple elementary school type of lab. So, it would be kind of nice to know if we can go that route and get it, so that we're starting even sooner with it, because it was, and at the elementary level, it was real basic, I mean, just computers creating stuff, and they had the 3D printers, and they could do it, but then they were ready to go on, and it was just even more experience than they had. So, this seems like a good start, and there's a lot of possibilities with it.
I think it's exciting. I heard all of you talk about sort of the shortage of skilled workers for your different companies or projects and things like that, and I think that's really exciting. And I'm just wondering, how are we, just being really intentional about involving, like, trade associations and other companies and opening up opportunities for other avenues for students to see pathways in that? And I think just as much as we can show them, like, what does that look like? Because it's one thing to say, well, oh, here, take this class, and that puts you on a pathway, but what does it actually look like? Because I have no idea what that looks like. And so, just, and so, for a student to imagine that and envision that, it's like, what does a day in a life look like? Or what are opportunities to come to any of your, to your sites, or to have people come in and show them what are pieces that they worked on or projects that they're doing, so that they can see more of that application of, because everyone complains, you know, when am I ever going to use geometry or physics or whatever? And I'm guessing clearly, in your realm, that is something they're going to be using a lot of, and so, helping them see that practical application of those courses and those skills, and then how it plays out in that space, I think, being really intentional about that is going to be important.
I'll just offer an invitation. Anytime you want to have a field trip or a group of people come for a visit, you know, we'll arrange it. So, we do that all the time. We do tours, and we can do small groups where they meet with engineers or maintenance techs and talk about their job and what they do, but, you know, to make it real for people that actually do it, we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to do that. I'm sure you guys would do that, too.
We've done a lot the same, so we've also been involved with high schools where they'll put kids into like a program, and they'll come spend a week with a person touring around. Maybe it's a day a week where they'll come in. We have done tours, obviously, for us, tours are a little bit more difficult, but we do do them. We have done them. We've brought people through. We also work with a lot of the local colleges, and we'll bring in co-ops and those types of things, too. So, I think there's always opportunity. It's a matter of reaching out and figuring out a time and how we can work together with folks on letting people see that, because the practical side is really important, right? I'm a chemical engineer. I grew up in a town called Midland, Michigan, it's home of Dow Chemical, so it was easy for me to understand, like, what an engineer was, because the big factory sat right in the backyard, and people's parents all worked there. So, having that, like, vision is obviously important, and I understand what you're looking for there. I was fortunate where I grew up and how it was, but it's important for people to be able to see that.
I wanted to add, one of the things we learned about the pathfinding programs was project management, because teachers alone just don't have time to develop that pathway that we talked about. So, we wanted to have career navigators to fund a position. We weren't able to do that this year, but over this year of development, and really being intentional about the career talks, really being intentional, intentional, about possible summer jobs, possible, kind of just job shadowing, maybe it's just job shadowing, and internships ultimately. I think that was in year three or four. So, hopefully, internships or something like an apprenticeship. I know that that has different connotations. And I do want to say that Renewal by Anderson invited, we took 50 kids there, I think, last spring, to their career day. So, we're actually able to go there. We do that with 3M as well. It is harder for some times with security and what they do, but our goal is to have some sort of project management that can allow that intentionality to happen.
I also wanted to say thank you so much, especially, you know, Ken, your, the refinery group with robotics is amazing. Your addition to DataBits and VERS and our G-Rex, and all of them are amazing, and the support of the East Metro Collaborative, and now we're bringing our FTC teams in, so I know, especially the refinery comes up a lot. It's kind of fun to hear, you know, myself hearing your name in the community in a lot of circles. So, I personally want to thank you for all that, and all of you at Anderson. I just think it's absolutely thrilling to think that all three of our high schools, our whole district, could have access to real pipelines for jobs at a time when it's such a perfect goal for partnering. And also really encourage you to keep getting those people inside, you know. One of the things I love about robotics is the adult mentorship, opportunities for volunteers inside the companies to come, you know, in and work with the students, for them to really see, I see the value of all those kids. Having been in robotics for many years, as a little super fan, not doing it myself, but I have seen these kids now go from, you know, geeky eighth grader or even Lego League kids to having amazing jobs and opportunities and respect for science and technology. So, thank you all. This is thrilling, and I hope we see you often. Thank you.
I too would like to thank you not only for the monetary gift, but just the passion in your voice, because, you know, sometimes corporate America gets this bad rap of only wanting profits and not giving back to the community, or when they give back to the community, it's a photo op. But I can just tell in your presentation tonight, you really do have a care for the community. A number of you live in the community, which is even an added benefit. The one thing that I thought about was, you know, I wanted to feel like it's our plan. It's not this plan, your plan. It's our plan coming together. And one of the ideas that came to my mind is this mentoring shift, as the discussion was, of, you know, going and, it's cool to go, you know, tour the plant, but I know the corporation I work for, one of the things they've done is the mentoring program that we've established is ongoing, at least like weekly or monthly, depending on each person at, say, at your facility. You mentor with somebody in that classroom. You provide phone numbers. You just check in from time to time, how's it going? That doesn't cost any money. It's a great interaction between a student and somebody working in the field, what did you learn today? And then, when the tour comes, it's like, then you've got that connectivity of a person, too. So, I throw that out there as maybe as an idea to go forward, and I do have one request, okay? When our students come up with the next Gatorade, that we would have the patent for it, and we'll negotiate with you at that point. How's that sound? And last but not least, for my own personal support, I'm fine, you know, with some of the branding, to give our vendor and our partners, even in the classroom, you know, to give them some of your branding in there. I'm certainly comfortable with that, too. I think it's good that our community knows who those folks that are supporting us so much, so, thank you, thank you again.
Well, I'm not going to say thank you again, especially in the confidence in our kids, and excited to see where they'll go with being able to tinker and find something new and exciting to share with all of us. So, thank you very much for being here, and thank you very much for your support for our schools.
I know Zayn Point One is showcasing our schools, and tonight, we have Royal Oaks Elementary with us, and Dr. Jacobus will introduce our guests.
Before I introduce Dr. Riesch and explain what we're doing, I do want to apologize to Mike Johnson. He talked to me about introducing the inventor space, and I jumped right in.
It's not evaluation time.
Exactly. He's not here to hear it, but that was unfortunate. So, one of the things we talked about last spring and into the summer, about all of the great things that happen in our schools on a regular basis. We're fortunate that Shelley, through our communications department, we put out each week the update on the great things that are happening, and it's just a small amount of positive experiences that kids have had throughout the week. So, what we wanted to do is give you a chance and give the community a chance to hear from one of our elementary and one of our secondary schools once a month, to showcase whatever element in their school that they're proud of, that they're working on, that their kids are moving forward with, or their teachers. And so, tonight, we were fortunate with Park to have the inventor space, and for our elementary, we're fortunate that Dr. Susan Riesch is here and to talk about what they are doing at Royal Oaks Elementary, particularly in the area of Abbott at the elementary. You have heard a lot about Abbott at the secondary, but we haven't talked much about how we implement in the classroom, and I'll let you take it from there and just go.
Okay. Good evening, board members, Dr. Jacobus, cabinet members, community members that are listening, and staff, and there could even be some of our students that are listening. I'm Susan Riesch, as Dr. Jacobus said, the principal at Royal Oaks, and this is Jen Burko, one of our fourth grade teachers, Abbott Lead, and cultural leadership team facilitator, and other many hats that she does wear. Well, let's see, let's get this going so we can see the next part. In order for us really, I think, to understand Abbott, I'd really like to really paint a picture, so to speak, of what Royal Oaks looks like. I think that's very important for you to know, our staff, our children, what we offer, and so on. So, on the screen right now, you are seeing something called an Abbott Strategy, a one-pager. A one-pager is simply one page that gives you a lot of information. So, I'm just going to touch on a couple of highlights, so that you can really focus on those things. Number one, we have approximately 618 students at Royal Oaks. That would be our pre-K up to fifth grade. We have 23 classrooms with kindergarten through fifth. We have two preschool programs, and then three classrooms that We have two preschool programs, and then three classrooms that house our avid, or excuse me, not our avid, but our autism programs. Our staff, you know, I've been there since 2012. I just need to have a big shout out, so to speak, for our staff. We have an outstanding staff at Royal Oaks. And our number one focus is that we build relationships. We believe strongly that every child, every child needs to have a champion, someone that believes in them, someone that encourages them, someone that supports them, and not just academics, but their emotional growth, behavior, social, and so on. We feel strongly at Royal Oaks that once we build those relationships, everything else comes then. But that's the number one thing. And if you look at our mission, it says fostering here at Royal Oaks. We believe that fostering a culture of learning through respect, responsibility, and a sense of belonging for a lifetime of success. And we really focus on that. That really drives us every day when we come to work with our children. A couple other highlights on our one-pager, we have five leadership teams at Royal Oaks, which consists of culture, which Jen is our facilitator, so culture and climate, literacy, math, and then teacher support teacher. And these teams meet once a month, they plan all of our professional development, which we have monthly. They also work on our school improvement plans, do not just set the goals, but also all the action steps on what they're supposed to be doing, and then let the staff know that as well. Another thing I'd like to focus on is kind of in the middle there, and that's our Royal Oaks values. We really lucked out, so to speak, in the fact that Royal Oaks has nine letters, and there are nine months in a school year. So, every month, we focus on one of those values. So, this month, we're focusing on respect. And the nine that you will see there, our children, and our parents, and our staff voted on those words, and then our staff came up to really, what do those words exactly mean? And then down at the bottom, Abbott at Royal Oaks, most of those things then I will talk about at our next screen. So now, let's go ahead and talk a little bit about the history of Abbott at Royal Oaks. Like Dr. Jacobus said, our elementaries also have Abbott, and we believe strongly at Royal Oaks that an elementary school is really, that's the beginning of Abbott, that's our foundation. We focus on getting our children ready to move up to middle school, high school, and then to, of course, be college and career ready, which is our ultimate focus of our children and our schools. The first thing, the summer of 2013, we had our fourth and fifth grade teachers and myself, we attended the Abbott Summer Institute in San Diego. You know, it's great to go to San Diego. We had fun, so to speak, after hours, but the most important thing there, of course, was to learn about Abbott, the strategies, what things are we already doing, and what do we need to do, once we get back to school. And I remember Jen and the other teachers, that first year, we had training, 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 training. I mean, you know, training, intensive training, exhausting training, but then talking later about, wow, some of these things we are already doing, but yet there were many things that were brand new, and then bringing it back, how are we going to do it? And it was important that two grade levels went, so that we could really focus on those two grade levels first. And then the next year, the summer of 2014, our third grade teachers and myself went, so we really do have that alignment of third, fourth, and fifth. They meet three times a year in the site team, third, fourth, and fifth grade teams, which Jen facilitates, and we really have that alignment. In third grade, we do this, in fourth grade, we build on that, and then fifth grade, we build, and then, of course, up to the middle school, they're building, of course, on what we're doing at our elementaries. We are very proud to say that 100% of our third through fifth grade teachers have attended professional development on Abbott foundation, and also culturally responsive teaching. So, not just Dr. Shiroki, which was awesome, just wonderful training, on helping us know how to be more culturally and linguistically responsive when we're teaching, but just being able to say that they all have that training, that's really, really important. 2016 to 18, we came up with this really, I think, fun idea, so to speak. It's called grab and go. And so, our literacy team and our cultural leadership team met, and basically what a grab and go is, we have about 500 books in our literacy library, along with all of the other books that we have. This just happens to be an example, it's called Jingle Dancer, it's about a Native American child, and some of the traditions, you know, that she does with her family and her community. And the envelope, this is an example of the envelope, we run off the cover, we title it, so that way a teacher knows, okay, I need something about this, whatever the topic might be, all right, here it is. They grab it, they go. And not just the book is in it, but then there are also avid strategies, culturally responsive strategies, and really just a synopsis of the book. So, a teacher doesn't really have to do planning, so to speak, it's just grab it and go, go use it, and you have some quality literature. The next thing, the last two summers, we've been so fortunate to have the Abbott Summer Institute in Minneapolis. We don't have to travel anywhere, we don't stay overnight, we just go. The school district has a bus, which a lot of times, teachers, if they want to, they can go together, which is really a great bonding experience as well. But we've gone, like I said, together, we eat together, we talk about Abbott, and it's just really a wonderful learning experience. And then, of course, as you know, professional development isn't just go, now how are we going to really apply those things? And we really focus on that at Royal Oaks. The strong balance literacy embeddedment, that would be really just using avid strategies in our, not just our reading core instruction, but also throughout our day, in social studies, and science, and all of our other areas. So, close reading, for example, using academic language, and so on. And then the last one, strong administrative support, well, that would be me, but it would also be all of some of the faces, actually, that I'm seeing in this room, our assistant superintendents, and other members of our district cabinet, and how they so support Abbott, and have so many opportunities. We are just really pleased and thrilled that we are a part of that, and that we can go ahead and really focus on Abbott at Royal Oaks. All right, that is my part. I know I talked very quickly, and there'll be time for questions in case you have any. And now, I'll turn it over to Jen, and she will really get down to, this is what it looks like in a classroom.
So, when I was planning for this, I realized that I could sit up here and talk about Abbott Elementary, so I timed it out so we all could get home at a reasonable time.
So, and I'm just going to kind of piggyback off some of the things that Dr. Riesch shared this evening, and it's very much a privilege to share Abbott Elementary with you. I'm very proud of the three, five teachers that I'm representing here tonight. It's not just me, it's the three, five teachers, and our reading specialist has joined our site team as well. So, just to give a quick, quick background about Abbott Elementary, it's a foundational component to the avid college and career readiness system. We heard in our previous presentation, at Park, how important that is, and so we are the foundations to building that. It is part of our daily instruction, and it puts a place, place the skills students need to guide them on their path to success, be it if it's college, if it's trade, whatever it might be. By teaching and reinforcing academic behaviors and higher level thinking at a very young age, Abbott Elementary provides students with time management and study skills, how to communicate effectively with each other, setting personal goals, self-advocacy, and all of this builds a strong community of our learners. The implementation of Abbott at Royal Oaks has provided common language found in our grades three through five. Common language gives teachers and students a platform to provide rigor and academic success in all of our Royal Oaks students. Students in third grade begin to learn the language and behaviors, and we build upon these in grades four and five. Along with our common language, students experience a strong vertical alignment at Royal Oaks with our planners and our organization tools. All of our three through five students do have planners, and also have a take-home binder. Three, five teachers, we work together in our site team, as Dr. Riesch talked about, so that we provide and build on the planner skills of students, and increase the expectations of the planner from year to year. The binder expectations are also established and built upon from year to year as well. Avid strategies empower our students with the tools and academic language that provide our students ownership of their learning that will lead them to academic success. So, last spring, we had an unbelievable honor at Royal Oaks. We partnered with Woodbury Middle. We were asked by Avid National to showcase avid strategies in our two buildings. And what we did at this showcase is we had 40 visitors from all over the United States, and they were district directors in training, and we were part of their training process. We were able to demonstrate how we are building a very strong support between elementary and a middle school. During the showcase, the visitors were able to see successful student habits, which is a language of Abbott, established in elementary setting. There was a panel of our fifth grade students that sat and shared with all the district directors from all over the United States, and how they personally use avid strategies daily. Royal Oaks students also demonstrated how to have an understanding of different levels of questions, costous levels of thinking, and how to effectively respond. Students demonstrated this through academic discussions, such as philosophical chairs and Socratic seminars. During the showcase, our students also demonstrated their understanding of use of academic language or content vocabulary. Students use N-Stems to assist them with communicating their thoughts in complete sentence while problem solving, or reading and discussing an article. You may be wondering, how does this all happen? Sounds really good right now. How does this happen with our instruction, and it's embedded in every subject we do? Avid professional development opportunities has been and continues to be the best that I have personally experienced in my 20-plus years of teaching. This training is in a format that allows teachers to experience and learn the strategies while exploring the why of Abbott Elementary's best practice. Once teachers leave this amazing training, South Washington County Schools has a strong support system to assist with the implementation. I wanted to talk a little bit about Molly Lester, our district director. She assists with the implementation of K through 12. She provides amazing professional development to teachers, and she also supports the avid building leads, and meets the needs of all the different buildings in South Washington County. Molly also provides a great gift to elementary classrooms. She provides an opportunity for her to come into our classrooms and to teach an avid strategy, while the teacher gets to observe her teaching that strategy in that teacher's classroom with our students. Very, very powerful. South Washington Schools also has 11 national staff developers who train nationally in the summer, and they also provide lots of in-house training for all A33 teachers. Each elementary building has an avid lead, such as myself, and the buildings lead, meet together to share building ideas and activities, along with learning new strategies, all led by Molly. Avid leads also meet in the buildings with the avid site team several times a year to discuss vertical alignment, common language, and to learn new strategies to implement into our classrooms. This support system allows for a very strong system to support our students as lifelong learners. Connecting with families is an extremely important part of Avid. Sharing and connecting with families provides a strong partnership between school and home. At Royal Oaks, we provide several ways that we share Avid with our community. I'm going to share a few things, and these are also found in your board packet. The first one is the open house. At open house, each teacher provided this year a little avid brochure with grades three through five families that highlight information about the avid organization and Avid at Royal Oaks. At conferences, we have many examples found in the three through five hallway that show examples and vocabulary that students use throughout their day, of the different strategies, and the families are able to sit and have conversations before or after conferences. And the last one that I would like to share with you is our monthly newsletter, and I am most proud of this. This show, this is part of Dr. Riesch's newsletter, and it spotlights a specific avid strategy, and it explains it briefly, just as I am explaining Avid Elementary briefly tonight, but it also shows pictures, and it's not pictures from Google, it's pictures from Royal Oaks Kids. And so, there's an actual personal connection with what strategies are there, and the students are able to see their work going out to the Royal Oaks community. So, there's several examples. You can also see up on the board, this is an example of our vertical alignment for planners, so you can see what happens in third grade with our planners, what happens in fourth grade, and then what happens in fifth grade. A great foundation to send them off to our middle schools. The last thing I'd like to briefly talk about is their college and career culture, and we heard great things that are happening at Park, we're the foundation to all of that. And at Royal Oaks, we have a very strong career and college culture. In November, we specifically celebrate college and careers through a variety of different, a variety of activities promoting lifelong goals for our students, and teachers and staff share their stories about their educational journey. Outside of each of our grades three through five classrooms, a nameplate can be found with the college or colleges the teachers attended, and the degree they earned. So, this really provides a great connection with our families when they come in, and that they can see that someone went to college that maybe an older brother, sister are going to, or maybe that they personally went through. By providing a strong implementation of Avid at Royal Oaks, we are providing all students with a nurturing environment with high expectations. And as I said, I could keep going, and going, and going, but we'll stop so we can all get home at a reasonable time. All right. Then last, you know, we're talking, but really, to really get a feel for Avid at Royal Oaks, or any of our schools, of course, you really need to come and visit. So, you are all invited, you don't have to make an appointment, you don't have to call ahead, just come. Stop in the office, we give you a visitor name tag, and then we'll send you out just to see what Avid looks like, and many of the other things that at Royal Oaks we are so proud of. At this time, are there any comments about anything that we talked about, or maybe something that we didn't about Avid that you would like us to address or visit with you about?
It's amazing. So great to see school-wide, almost, you know, three through five Avid, just think of the years when it started, and we're like, come on, Brian, come on, Brian, and everybody, all the people working on the accountability and all the stuff, and wanting all the stuff to roll out so fast, it's so great to see it rolling out in real time. So, it's very exciting for everybody involved. Thank you.
And our goal in the next year or two is really to be a kindergarten through fifth grade avid school. So, we're, you know, just beginning conversations, how would that look for professional development for our kindergarten through second grade teachers, so that we can really have Avid from day one, like today kindergarten started, from day one up to our fifth grade?
And I want to say, I snuck in, and I've been in Jennifer's class, and it's amazing, and the kids really enjoy it. So, good job, great job.
I just really wanted, not to take anything with you, Susan, but Jennifer, thank you for coming. I just always appreciate hearing our staff, you know, those front row teachers coming in. What's interesting to me, while we've had numerous presentations in our different schools around Avid, and I will tell you, every single teacher that's doing the program comes in with the same passion and excitement that you brought, and that's the thing that it tells me, that it isn't just in one of our schools, it's in all of our schools. So, I'm excited for the program, and seeing this process together.
And that's exactly why I asked Jen. Because I could talk about it forever, but I'm not in the classroom, and we need a real teacher, so to speak. Thank you so much for being here with us. Thank you.
9.0, we don't have any discussion items this evening. 10.0 are action items. 10.1 is the approval of sale, refunding, facility maintenance funds, series of spending, no points, and the order of finance, you know.
That's your one pager.
Tonight, we, because we're always doing it, I left this out. So, I have with me a member of my financial advisor, dollars, that I left your place for you. She might remember differently, but she's one to speak tonight a little bit, and that's Sheldon McQuaid. Before you start, I took, there's some events, right, and I could do a little story, turn across. So, there was an accountant, you know, a lawyer, sits on a beach in Hawaii, picked her Mai ties, and they got to talk, and, and got to talk about how they ended up in this place, and the lawyer said, why opened a large... I owned a large office building in downtown Memphis, and it was destroyed by fire, and with all the insurance money, I gave it up and came down here." And the accountant said, "Well, I owned a large office building in Miami, and floodwater had run the gullin', and I also got rid of insurance, you know, here." And the lawyer looked at the accountant and said, "How do you start flooding?"
Oh, no.
So tonight, we just want to talk about refunding some more bonds, and we will be serious, quite gently. And when you look at those series numbers, like, you know, never met this point, it's true, but it's clear at all. It's always the year that it was issued, and then the letter behind it would be, you know, if it's like the first one of the year or the second one. Some guys, you know, they give, well, we'll just put it, bond series of the year. Let's put it on the first, first, uh, bond we would issue would be in 2010, and they were facility maintenance bonds. And our financial advisor elders will go through, at least quarterly, and look at all our bonds and see which ones are best for refunding or hard as in terms of, um, financing. Um, because we're refinancing mortgages and the final business we call refunding. The federal, document or the federal legislation has taken away the opportunity to answer these bonds, so we're still going to do the normal refunding of this, this time. Hopefully somebody will take that back, or we should do eventually. It was part of the, the act point. So tonight, we're recommending that we refund 27.4 million dollars of general obligation school building bonds that were issued in 2010. And we're looking to save above 1.38 million dollars in interest for the remaining terms of the bond. And once the, once the interest rate, once the interest savings are high enough, they were recommended to refund. And I will have Shelby go over the pre-sale report, which is in the packet, and then we'll talk about the next one this time.
Thank you for having me tonight, and I'll just walk quickly through the pre-sale report, your action item, and the, the resolution. And as I was tracking down and going through, I've spent a dollars for now two years, but not here in 2010, so I did a little bit of a history of what those bonds were issued, and it was the 2018A that was your facility maintenance bond. The 2010A was the refunding bonds from your, part of your 2000 school building bond. So those were refunded then in 2010, and you saved 2.9 million at that time, so then we're building on those savings now and refunding again and just creating a whole book format. And so on top of the 2.9, you've already saved a portion of that. So again, the purpose, you were formerly paying around 4% to 5% on those, on those existing funds, and we're currently estimating that you'll pay about 3%, and that's where you'll see the savings. In part because of the interest rate environment, but also because you now have a very short term of your bond, only, only four years left to pay on this bond, which shortens the term and offers you a better interest rate. So we anticipate that 1.4% or one, or, excuse me, 1.4 million or approximately 4.69% of the, of the savings on the debt service. Your authority to issue that, actually, okay. So your authority to issue into refund comes from state statute. The term, as I mentioned, is four years of refunds, and you'll begin paying interest on that in August of 2019. These will not be considered big qualified until you are able to issue big qualified if you're issuing less than 10 million dollars, but you've already issued 22 million in facilities maintenance bond, and then on top of, this is the 27-year wall over that 10 million threshold for issuing as big qualified. As part of the resolution tonight, you'll be covenanting yourself to be part of that state credit handsome program, which just gives you, provides you a little bit of insurance, and you've done that for every one of your bond issues. For this issue, you'll also receive a rating. You'll go through the rating process again, and Dan will burst in those, those calls and represent schools with district following those situations. You currently have an A2 underlying rating, and then it would be enhanced for movies, you will be buffered by that double A2 rating. We'll solicit competitive bids for the sale as we always do, and, and then we'll come back to you with the sale results next month. You're, we're currently estimating a premium pricing structure, some, we're in a market now where some issues are seeing a premium paid on the bonds and some are not. We're currently estimating that you'll receive a premium on this, and that's all taken into consideration of the sale, on the sale date. We are also considering estimating some interest earnings, so you'll receive the funds from the sale of this bond issue on November 6th. You're not then paying off the old bonds until shortly before that February 1 call date, and so you'll be able to invest the funds for a short period of time, whether it's the interest there. As Dan mentioned, we do provide a regular review of your existing debt. There's nothing else available to refund at this time, but we, as always, will continue to watch, watch that and update you when there are opportunities to refund. The continuing disclosure arbitrage monitoring sections are just part of the tax exempt debt issuance. You'll, you are required to provide certain updates annually, and you are working with us to do, to do that. The arbitrage monitoring is just part of the tax exempt issuance in your already complying with all those pieces there. The risk factors listed there are just that we're taking this time right now to, to refund the debt, given the market conditions. The new debt will not be callable, so, so this is the best time, as we see it, to refund those and take those higher interest rates that you were paying, and then refund it for a lower interest rate. The other service providers are listed there. And then the timeline, tonight you'll authorize the sale of the, the bonds. We'll work to distribute the official statement on the 17th, have that all with the agency, and then we'll take the bids on October 4th, and then we'll come to, and on that evening for sale, based on the laws to interest pass. The closing date, as I mentioned, is November 6th, and that's the date that you'll have the, the funds on hand, and then you'll pay those bonds off on February 1 of 2019. The schedules there are just the attachments that I watched through, through some of the details on, the sources, sources being the power moment of bonds and the premium, and the use in your ultimate deposit to the current refunding account is 27,945,040. Prior original debt services listed on there as well. So page seven then is the new debt service schedule, and then page eight provides a comparison where you can see that the total future value savings is 1,466,000, the, not present value savings, because that's 1,386,000 dollar amount that we're currently estimating, which is about 4.7% of the refund debt, and so, of successful refunding, that's what we're probably estimating, that's all of that to be. And then the final date, which is the past of the, of the interest earnings. Do you have any other questions?
I'm just curious, Dan, what's your feel on the bond grading? Feeling our fund balance still isn't at a fund balance, for others?
I don't anticipate going down, but I don't, you know, it's, it's a pretty short window since the last one, and they haven't even seen the new audited financials, so we're estimating it'll probably stay the same.
It's Shelby, no, no pressure, but the last couple that we've done have come in higher than the savings, even what was estimated, so not that we'll hold you to it, but we'll keep our fingers crossed, how's that?
That's good, yes. I'm grasping here, so we've incorporated a cushion into the estimates here, so, because of market fluctuations, and with more savings.
I think it's always good just to remind the public that these savings are, you know, funds that we can put into our general fund, and these are actually just reimbursed at that point, and then it actually holds tax, part of your taxes, school taxes.
Are there questions? All right, so we'll entertain a motion on the resolution, providing for the sale of general obligation school building refunding bond, series 10, 18B, and covenanting and obligating the district to be bound by and to use the provisions of Minnesota Statute Section 1260.55 to guarantee payment of the principal interest on the bonds.
Will you move the motion or the resolution?
Second. Second by Ryan, second by Katie, and so this is the resolution of all the year.
Heather Hirsch?
Yes.
Michelle Witty?
Yes.
Sharon Van Leeuwen?
Yes.
Tracy Burnett?
Thank you. All right, 10.2, approval of strategic plan priorities for ET 18. Dr. Fuller.
Thank you. As you know, this begins our third year of our strategic plan, and very proud of our plan as we developed it three years ago, to have two objectives that both work together to enhance an achievement for, for our students, but also to create the positive climate culture that helps our employees thrive as well. So we have our personalization objective, which is to work on our personalization, enhancing that for students as a cornerstone to our instructional strategies, to help them succeed in the classroom, and then our culture and climate objective that has two elements, a culture and climate element for our staff and our employees, and a culture and climate element for our students. So as you know, we had our large review with our large group, community members and staff members in May to review the progress and the data we gathered from the priorities and the action steps we put in place this last school year. They gave us feedback. We took a look at the feedback to see if there would be modifications and improvements to what we would bring forward this evening and ask for your approval. On the, we are not going to use a PowerPoint or project, the sheets that you have in front of us, in front of you going through each of the priorities. People at home have that, they can see that, and we have some extra copies for folks in the audience. But you'll be asked to approve the success measures are the list of our priorities that we would move forward for this school year. So we want to start with our culture and climate, and on our agenda, we're starting with students, but, but we had talked about starting with the, so I'll turn it over to Kevin Witherspoon, our Director of Human Resources.
Perfect. Thank you. So I'll speak tonight briefly about the employee climate and culture, and we have three priority statements. Two of them are very similar to the ones we have. We gathered some feedback from the, the meeting in May in order to make some changes, but priority statement one, 90% of all employees will participate in at least one professional development activity about cultural awareness, enhancing work, climate culture, or work-life balance. We've made that goal, and we're going to continue working on that goal. One of our focuses this year will be on the 75% of employees participating in an employee climate survey will report positively. We didn't send one out last year, and so our goal will be to send that out and garnish them, some feedback that way. My priority statement two is similar to the one that we had in the past, and that is that District 833 will increase the number of new hires of color from 11% to 15%. This will increase, this increase will be looking at the number of new hires from June 30th, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. And two slight changes there would be that we changed to 11% because that actually reflects the baseline data that we have. Our goal last year, last time, was 12% to 15%. Well, we didn't reach that goal, so we wanted the baseline to reflect where we're at. And then we moved the, the dates from May to May to June to June, because we actually do a lot of hiring in between May and June 30th. So I just wanted to make sure that we can incorporate those, incorporate those new, new hires, so. One of our action steps here is recruiting candidates by increased attendance and presence at out-of-state job fairs. Originally, I brought to the group that I wanted to take that out because we weren't exactly getting a lot of out-of-town candidates. Feedback from the group, they actually wanted that to stay, and so we'll look at areas that we can, that we might garnish more, more support, such as in Milwaukee or Madison as opposed to east and west coast or something. So I think we'll try that out this year and see. We'll continue to partner with colleges to recruit diverse candidates. Right now, we have relationships with Metro State, U of M, and St. Thomas, and we'll, we'll obviously continue and expand some of those as well. Priority statement three is new, and that is that District 833 will develop and implement a retention plan for all employees. We're looking at the Recruitment and Retention Committee, Human Resources, and the Educational Achievement and Integration Departments. We'll continue to expand the relationship to, to work on those. We, we will establish an affinity group. We did establish an affinity event with the Teachers Union last year. I think there was about 25 in attendance, and so we'll look at both adding additional events as well as trying to get more participation as well. And then lastly, well, second to last, we'll look at a mentoring program for our staff of color. One of the, Keith gave me actually that I think's a, that I'm looking into more, it's called BOND, and it's called Building Our Network of Diversity, and there's other school districts that use that, and I'd like to learn a little bit more about that and see if that's something we can implement here in District 833. And then finally, take a look at our exit interview process and establish a process. We don't, we collect data, we don't necessarily have a way to track well and/or see how we're doing, and so we'll work on establishing an exit interview process to make more informed decisions based on the data that we receive. What are some things that we can change to retain more employers? Why are people leaving? What can we do to support people better? So those are the priority statements in brief. Any questions that I can answer for you? Thank you.
So I guess one question, I know when we were talking about the percentages of trying to hire people of color, I mean, so is this realistic? Because I know when we talked about before, it just, you know, there aren't that many going actually into the field and things like that, so are we?
I think it will be a difficult goal to achieve. I think it could be attainable, and I, and I want to reach for that goal, and so I think we have to continue with that. I do think, yeah, there's some potential there with the new licensing tiered system in terms of how to get a tier one license through Pelsby now, which was the Minnesota Department of Education before. So it kind of opens the doors a little bit more for more people to get those tier one licenses and be able to be in our classrooms. So that might be one avenue to pursue as well.
I think if we were to mount, at two changes within Minneapolis and St. Paul, their hiring process, we're looking more to the district, our line of district, so it's giving them a lot of calls.
I did notice that we had an uptick in the St. Paul, Minneapolis teachers, so.
Yeah. So I think it is a, it should work out.
And this is for all employees though, right? Not just teachers?
It's really great, it's for all employees, correct?
I feel like we looked at that and said, well, we can look across.
Yep, and we generally do better with our other groups in terms of hiring people of color. There's more candidates than in the teaching ranks, so.
I don't have a question, I just want, I appreciate you took the feedback, the group. I know this was an area we spent a lot of time talking about at the meeting back in May, and people had a lot of ideas, not always realistic, feasible ideas, but I think there was a lot of conversation and a lot of ideas, and so I'm glad that some of them are able to make, make it back into, or stay in the plan.
I think that's really important for the public and for all of us to realize, that review in the spring is really important, and it's, it's our, our check and balance. It gives the community a chance to really be critical of, in, in, in the best sense of the word, of how are we doing and giving us feedback, and then we really did want to highlight as any changes that were made, that it's not simply a great day and a half with folks and a rubber stamp, so to speak. So we'll turn it over to Mike then to talk about our culture and climate with students.
Like the staff culture and climate, we have three priority statements. We altered them slightly with our, with our large group, large group after the, the May meeting, but first of all, applying student preference for learning by creating opportunities at the secondary level that involves share order, that involves shared the secondary level that involves share ownership. Last year, we, the verb was understand. Well, now we understand, now we can go after it and apply. So the first success measure is to have that middle school program of study on a district website, but it's to make it more robust. We just have course descriptions now, and with all the work that our TLS department has done to be able to unpack standards on both core and on core classes, we're really excited about that. For this first priority statement, Kelly's going to be integral in this, and she's already been a tremendous help. Our second success measure or action step would be, and this is something new that we had gotten from the feedback in May, is at times we had the CAC, the Curriculum Advisory Committee. Last year, we had the parents, the children of their, of those adults that were in there. We met with their, with the secondary kids to be able to talk about, you know, their preference and things, but what we heard in May, what we heard in May is that we should have more focus groups across all eight secondary schools instead of just, okay, let's take 12 to 15 of these select kids. So we'll get more kids, but they'll be across all eight secondary schools. The third item is to, you know, to use that feedback and then to continue to share that with the administrators at the district level as well as the building principals for the high school program of study. And an excellent example of that was what we just learned here with Park. And we got that idea, we get those ideas not just from adults, but from kids. They talk about hands-on, minds-on, and that's an example. And we just had a program study meeting today with Kelly, Todd Highland, and others just to talk about, you know, these are the types of things that'll come up for our May meeting, by the way. So our second priority, and we've really had a lot of help in the past from Christine on this, is demonstrating, this year, this next year, it'll be demonstrating the use of CLRT across the district, whereas last year it was more continue our professional development. We can execute it now, we can demonstrate it. So the first action step and success measure would be to, to continue to use Dr. Holly's text as a basis for a lot of our staff meetings and book studies and so forth. We need to continue that, and we need to make sure that it's on our strategic plan, that we don't forget it. We're also getting the help of our CLRT district coaches in this measure. The second priority statement Christine has shared with me too, we're really going to look for a minimum of six of our schools to work very closely, one-on-one with Dr. Holly, as well as those two CLRT district coaches. Like I said, minimum of six. And then thirdly, implement the walkthrough form that we had discussed prior. Christine and I and Tim Bonnell and select principals at six or seven of our schools, we piloted this walkthrough form, and not only would, would the administrator use it, the equity team leader, teacher leader could use it, the CLRT district coach could use it. So it's not just the principal. This could be other people that would gather that data for us and gather it until April. We could find out, you know, what, what do we need to work on so we can then, what are the things we're seeing across the district and then share that in May with our large group. And then finally, relationship building. You know, last year, we talked about focusing, and now we're analyzing what we've used in the past. And Brian is extremely instrumental in this. The first one is to identify those strategies. We've already done that. He had done kind of that pre-test back in the spring where he had front-loaded specific grade levels, because then the success measure for number two, item number two, is the Minnesota State Survey. So what Brian had done is he had gathered that data from student surveys, and he shared the data, the results with the principals and the ATPPS district leads and, or the teacher leaders. So then they were able to get that information, ooh, we didn't do so well on this one, so we really need to improve that for our SIP for the coming year. So that's that first item, and that's completed. The second item, like I said, was surveying the kids through the Minnesota Student Survey in the spring. But one thing that we got from, we received that feedback in May from the large group was, what about staff and parents? They should have a voice in this. Maybe staff are understanding, hey, this is really making a difference. Or parents, do we notice certain things that the school is doing as well? So that's what we, that's what we chose to add to this group with, with my small group. And that's something new that we appreciated from that, the May large strategic planning group, because we took it last spring and now we're going to take it again in April. Boy, it'd be kind of nice to know how we, how we're doing, and if we need to adjust something after January, we could do so. So Brian would help develop that survey and then launch it. So those are our three priorities with the three action steps and success measures for student culture and climate.
Just have one comment. Nice job. You're doing a great job. One question.
Definitely a team approach.
One question, so yeah, I love how these, it's kind of like unpacking standards. I mean, you know, first you've learned them, and now we do win them, which is really great. So the one thing I keep remembering from my participation at my table for, from the strategic plan was one of the parents who said, boy, yes, the district's doing great stuff, but there's still like these two teachers in my school who aren't getting it, or something like, where, like if there's people, when people feel like there, there's a gap of learning in terms of implementation of CLRT strategies, or, and they want to like say that, or, you know, we've sort of talked about this, I don't want to say report it like that, but, you know, they want to share that. I'd still love to find some way to, where that's okay and people know what to do with that. So if they feel like, gosh, there's an issue here, where do they go with that? And so I don't know where that fits in. I mean, we're just starting to implement it, and maybe, and maybe in the third year we look at evaluation or something, but I just don't want to lose sight of that, because it was a parent who, you know, really said, yeah, we're doing good things overall, but individually, if you're in a classroom where a child is feeling like, or a parent, like we're not getting it, where can they go? So just something to think about as, as the implementation goes out maybe, or as the implementation's happening, like, is there some way to talk to parents about, talking to the principal, or what's the, what's the mechanism for parents? Because I think a lot of parents, you know, they don't, no one wants to tattle on anyone or say anything bad, and that's been the success of, you know, the bullying program. It's just, you know, an anonymous way to say, hey, there's a problem here. So I'd love to figure that out. So thanks. This is really exciting. Yeah.
Just a quick avenue right now is the word list. We, there's a lot of different information and questions that we've got that we, as we look at this year, is working with our feeding and equity, work of, you know, of formalizing.
That's a good idea. I think there's a lot of information. So.
So on the personalization, oh, I'm sorry. Wait, see, I see.
Sorry.
Yep.
And I have, this is my, like, it's my favorite part of what we do. So I, I'm just curious though, specifically our priority statement two, you have success measures in there, but how are our buildings reporting those to you, principals reporting that to you? How are you capturing that information? Because there's, teaching staff can access this in a number of different ways, so how are, how are we compiling, how do we know if we're successful? How are we, whether we're using it? So like, so you have 100% of teachers will access resources, engage via books, videos, teaching, or other methods, how are we capturing, how are we capturing, how are we evaluating that? How is that a success?
Right. We didn't show the data. Last year, that was the last two, I developed a spreadsheet where the principals, principals, those principals meeting, where we had them filled out, for example, they'd put down the number of staff meetings they had, how many times they had presented, or something presented by an equity teacher, or Christine, or possibly the principal. So that's how we were tracking that. That's just one example.
Yeah, and if I could just add to that, too. So remember, we do have an equity teacher leader in every school, and that person meets with myself, and now our two CRT trainers in our district. And so we guide them on each month, this is what you should be bringing out to your school and teaching to your staff, so that we're sure that every school is consistent in what they're getting and, and it's going out.
So not only is there sort of like a coordinated approach, but then there's also someone who's got to just approach them and support them and make sure that it's happening.
Yes.
And not committing that, bringing it back.
Yes.
That's why, that's one reason why we put this equity, or the equity teacher leaders on the walkthrough, because it's a normal thing going, and there are some people that have really good relationships with them and very well.
My other question is, sort of, I think we're ready for Michelle to kind of have Keith talk about it, but, so Royal Wilkes, for example, presented on what they're doing around Abbott, and they have a great brochure, they're giving out to families. So I think that would be an area where, how do families engage in that question of like, because I remember hearing that parents, or a couple of parents actually mentioned, okay, these are great strategies, you say you're doing them at my school, my kids haven't experienced this. So, so I think, especially if we're presenting and saying, like, Royal Wilkes, and I'm sorry, I'm picking Royal Wilkes, but, but it's, so they're doing this, and they're really promoting it, and they're putting out a good of families, and so how are families able to engage with that? Are there, and it could be around Abbott, or it could be around the LRT, or it could be around whatever the school is doing. So aside from just, like, we talked about it at Open House, kind of part of conferences, like, what are opportunities for them to talk about the survey data, or to talk about the, yeah, the strategies, and what is that looking like, or getting some of that dialogue and the back and forth, and more of a quality of, of the survey?
That's a, that's a great question, and that's something we should look at implementing with getting parents to see it, kind of like we showed you last year. How can they see what's happening in the classroom? So we could maybe add that.
No, I think those are good questions, and really some difficult elements that we look at, how do we know that, that all of the work that's been done in the training, how is, how is that affecting the classroom? Sometimes these strategies to kids will be invisible. It's done well, so it may not be that a parent would say, well, it's not happening, because their kids can say, well, this is what happened around this. But there's other elements to look at with the walkthrough, things like that, and those are good comments that we'll take a look at as we go forward.
Well, is some of that coming through, like the School Agies, or referrals that we're using, that kind of stuff? Wouldn't you be able to see some data? If stuff's implemented, if some of the, your parents would see the whole work that goes through the School Agies or?
I think, yeah, to answer that direct question, yes. That's part of the, how these objectives start to tie together is, our goal is shared ownership of learning. That's the phrase that we, we've kind of targeted. And when you use a School Agy or a Seesaw or other ways in which we can open up the classroom walls a little bit, our parents start to see more and more, here's what's taking place in the classroom, these are the instructional strategies, here's how my student's doing academically and socially, emotionally. And so, yes, I believe that the partnership of those things over, over the next few years is what's going to really make all of this come together.
And I actually, my son's teacher, using Seesaw, sent the very first day a picture of what the binder looks like, similar to what we saw, and explained in a short video that everybody would have gotten to their phone, explained what it is in the Abbott strategy. And it just said, this is what it is, this is where homework is, this is what they're supposed to do with it. So as a parent, then, I'm not just looking blindly at a planner, and I'm like, okay, why is this this color, why is this whatever? So I think with these new avenues we have, like School Agy, and I think even more so with Seesaw, because it's a little more immediate, whereas School Agy, you have to go in and you have to do a little bit more, and Seesaw's a little more immediate. The parents are able to see those steps even on a daily basis, depending on how much interaction the teacher has.
And our teachers want to show the good things that are happening, so it's easier with Seesaw because of the video and things, but the School Agy, as we get into it, there's all sorts of elements that, once we get used to it, people understand it, they understand better, they'll, they'll push more. I know there's capabilities to send to at home, so that's a, a good question, hopefully that that, since School Agy will be utilized throughout the system, but that will look good.
Can you share a bit on the School Agy? Is it available?
I mean.
If they don't know how to use it?
Yes, and I, I'll, I'll give a kudos to our tech team over the past two, three weeks, and Bob in particular, has been responding to any parent question or concern in terms of getting, right now, the first step is let's get people in, get them access, make sure they can log in, their credentials match, and the amount of, of parents that are now registered, it's been an incredible amount of work that Bob and his team have put together. And so as we continue to implement, you know, for some of our schools, this is brand-new. The first phase is access, the second thing is more about information, here's what you can use it for. And then we'll start to getting, get into more of those advanced features, but we also have to give our teachers some of that time, too, to, to learn the program. But that is a part of the long-term vision of this as well, yes.
And we have some written directions, but Bob has single-handedly handed, or handled about 150, 200 phone calls by, from Harrisburg School Agy. Now, there's thousands that have gotten in, but that's how, right now, which is overwhelming for him. So again, I appreciate Bob's diligence in trying to answer the questions, and, and since it's new, once we get a year under our belt over a few months, I think it's going to be easier and trying a different way.
We're back to school. Yeah. Also, last week, for example, Todd Highland, who's a product of metal, he's helping trip us out of this two-hour time. Before time, just kind of getting in and checking.
All right, then on to personalization. The bulk of the personalization priority statements and the work comes through Brian Booth and Kelly Jansen, who will talk through those areas and where we're going this year. But there is an element that, that I have been the point person responsible, and it's in two different areas. One is with the student group, and another is with my adult advisory group. So starting with the students, what they were looking at is how to, how in their opinion could they enhance the personalization in the classroom? And so, as you know, if you were at the, the spring and what we've done in the past, they looked at doing some design thinking, they came up with, they felt that the color inventory, learning style and personality inventory that, that Woodbury Middle School has been utilizing for a number of years would be a great way for teachers to really get to know them quickly, and if they knew their teacher's color and, and what that means, for them to get to know the classroom. So we looked at how we could implement that throughout the system. We decided we would look at piloting at a few schools, and through last year, we didn't gather enough data to definitively say we think that all kids should take it and that it can be beneficial. So what we proposed for this following year is to continue to gather data to delve more into the pilots that we have. Oldman Middle School, just as a side note, they just did the color inventory with their full staff, and so there'll be another middle school, full middle school that the, the teachers have, have taken the inventory and potentially will be using with their, their classroom. So this year, we're going to continue to evaluate to see if that is where we want to go throughout the system. The second group, there are the, my advisory committee that, we, I do have students, I should say, it's only adults, but we looked at a homework policy. And what would, we don't have a district-wide policy on homework, it's, it's left up to individual schools and individual classrooms. But part of trying to make sure that, that learning is understandable for the students and the parents is, is what is homework, what does it, what is it used for, and how can we implement homework in the most effective way for kids versus then just going through what we all went through, is that we have homework every night? And so they analyzed research throughout the year, they came up with a draft homework policy. It was run past a, a number of groups and revised, and from the spring, the review, the folks liked the, the concepts in there. And what we had proposed, that we will continue then, is we will bring that to a group of practitioners, teachers from all levels who would be implementing that policy to do some refinement, to make sure that it is workable, pre-K through 12. And if everything goes well, then we would anticipate bringing this policy to the board in spring, for you, you to look over and potential approval. Any questions? Let's move to Brian and Kelly.
All right. Kelly and I are excited to share with you the updated personalization priority statements. Last year, we had a total of six priority statements for personalization, and so perhaps the biggest shift you'll notice is the reduction to just three priority statements. This shift is a result directly from the feedback from our strategic planning committee in May. To reiterate, the goal of the personalization objective is to engage, motivate, and empower each student through personal instruction, creating shared ownership of learning. Dr. Jacob has just shared priority statement one, which focuses on empowering. Dr. Jacobus just shared priority statement one, which focuses on empowering student voice. Priority statement two, the new priority statement two, is to focus standards-based instruction through the development of grade level and content area priority benchmarks, paving the way for the development of a K through 12 standards-based progress reporting system, in which grades reflect achievement of specific learning outcomes and individual strengths and areas for growth, and are communicated this through the use of technology. The focus of this statement is to engage and motivate students and families. The, the new statement now reflects the merger of last year's priority statements two, three, four, and five. In these areas, last year, we moved forward with standards-based progress reports at grades one and two, we practiced standards-based reporting at grades three, four, and five, and we continue to lay the foundation of standards-based work at the secondary level. Last year's priority statement five was focused on the initial rollout of the learning management systems to support standards work. This included School Agie and Seesaw.
So, I'll start. The priority statements outlined in the document reflected an attempt to align the time, resources, support, and technology under the umbrella of personalization and standards-based instruction. So, action step one is the beginning of a realignment of the Teaching and Learning Services Department, so my department, the Research Evaluation and Assessment, Ryan, Achievement and Integration, which used to be known as the OEI Department, so, and the Technology Department with Bob. So, to support the work of this statement, we are all trying to come together and align our resources. So, I'll work with the assistant superintendents and the directors of those departments to make an organizational chart, where it's clear where that communication is and where those supports for the work that's happening in our schools is coming from.
Action step two will be shared with the board at the first meeting in October, when we roll out the latest versions of our K through five standards-based progress reports. We're excited to move this work forward to all students in the elementary level and share with our community why this is an important shift within the personalization objective.
Action step three is an important piece of how we support staff with the resources. So, once we have powered those standards, unpacked them, we know how, where we want students to be, what resources are we using, and, and what assessments are we using to assess that learning. So, we are looking at, looking at that and fully implementing that standards-based instruction. So, we will work as a staff to provide the resources, materials, and curriculum, curriculum to meet those prioritized benchmarks on the progress report. We're going to begin this work with our new coordinators diving in right away this fall and, and spending a lot of time with staff and with administrators in the schools and seeing where are we and what are we doing in our tier one instruction, and our tier two instruction, and in our tier three instruction. So, that's the beginning of that.
Action step four is to continue the work of prepping our secondary teachers for standards-based work. We've been working on prioritizing standards and unpacking benchmarks, creating success criteria for the past few years, and it is a key foundational piece of personalization moving forward.
Action steps five and six, we've all, we talked a little bit around the School Agie and Seesaw piece. So, action step five is to move forward with our School Agie rollout. School Agie is the learning management system that all of our secondary schools will use to grade student achievement. This system is also a way for teachers to start to deliver instruction digitally and track progress towards standards. This year, our focus is getting teachers, parents, and students in the system for grades with more features and work to be done in the future. Action step six is then to continue to develop the use of Seesaw at the elementary level, moving up to grade three. Last year, we used it grades K through two, and this year, we've added grade three. The goal of using this software is to share student learning and progress with families. Seesaw is a digital portfolio and communication tool, as you mentioned, that parents can use to see what's happening in their child's classroom.
All these action steps tie together to help us map out a plan of how we can personalize the learning experience for our students, both academically and then in communication. The front, the final priority statement for personalization is in regards to extended learning and out-of-school time, and how it connects to our early childhood program for personalization. The action steps are to continue to develop an out-of-school time model, connecting targeted services and other programs within our school district to a larger teaching and learning vision. We're also continuing to develop a birth-through-third-grade vision. Our hope is that the combination of these priority statements will move the personalization objective forward this year, as we continue to engage, motivate, and empower our students to create shared ownership of learning.
No, I just want you, so, so, in priority statement two, like, talk, can you give an example of what you mean when you say align assessments and resources with your assessment? What does that mean?
Well, I mean, when, now that we've prioritized, we've unpacked and developed the success criteria, we've got the reporting system in place. It's still, of course, we'll need refinement as we, as we understand more and more about how we're teaching them. The follow-up question for that, for our teachers and for us as administrators, is what resources and what assessment practices can I use to inform my reporting process? Those things kind of have to go hand in hand. In some cases, they're going to be maybe common-wide assessment practices that we, that we use across the district. For example, BAS, or the Benchmark Assessment System. That's a tool that we can all use and you, and share information with parents about how a student is progressing. Some of the benchmarks don't require common assessments. Some benchmarks might require common resources. And so, for example, when you see the work within K through two mathematics and the bridges adoption, that is a direct result of the fact that we've prioritized, we've unpacked, we've developed success criteria, and our teachers needed to have a conversation about what resource material are we going to use to instruct and assess this? So, that's the, that's an example of how we're moving forward with that.
And it's been a while, as we've looked at it as a system, and so, that's where the curriculum coordinators are going to have those, they're going to spend a lot of time with, personally with teachers and looking at to, what is each school using and what's working well, and what is it that needs to go out of the system, and what do we need to bring in the system?
Just a comment? I'm very impressed. They're skilled. They're very smart. I always had a quick question on this year, the grading, obviously, a little exercise at our meeting. So, do you also talk to parents about how to understand all that? Because obviously, we didn't, so. Or is it kind of, I mean, their child probably knows, so maybe their child can answer, but...
Well, I mean, it's, it's a great question, Tracy. It's, it is something that we've, we're working with our communications department. In fact, we met today to talk through not only the board presentation that we'll be doing with you next month, but also a video that will be sent out for all of our families at the elementary level to help try to explain some of the aspects of it. It is complicated. We are also, we've been training all of our elementary staff members across the district in kind of what, what we've referred to as SBI 101, Standards-Based Instruction 101, to help give them the language to explain this to their families when, when questions arise. And we'll also be working on some communication to our students directly to help them teach mom and dad a little bit about how the, the new grading process works. And so, yes, there is an intentional educational effort on, on our end to try to show, here's what this new process is and why it is, is better and more informative, and how you can read your progress report to make it make sense.
And I would say, it's, the concepts are, when, with going through this in other districts, that, that parents understand the concepts as we go through it, the implementation becomes difficult. It's much easier to move to a standards-based grading system in, in elementary and even into middle school. High school becomes a really difficult issue because people are used to what they think grades mean, and they want to hold on to that. They also struggle with the fact that people can agree that we want the grades to really reflect what you learned, and not if you're punctual on, on handing in assignment, not if you bring extra credit for whatever that has nothing to do with whether you, you understand biology. But when you get into that, and you start looking at grades, getting ready for college, there's a discussion about effort should mean something. So, we have a lot of work, I appreciate the way, the thinking on how we roll it out, because I think we'll, the high school will be a, a challenge in understanding it. And it's a philosophical change that is not easy to overcome. And every district that, around Minnesota and back in Colorado, struggle at the high school level to implement well and to, to have people feel comfortable that the system is still providing support for their student and getting them to, ready to do anything they want after they graduate.
I do have to say that now I've had the standards-based progress report, two years for my youngest now, and it's nice. I notice the students with the ICAN statements, even when I've been in the classroom for, you know, visits or reading to the kids or whatever. The one thing that even with as much as I get on it, that is, the report card or the progress report is very overwhelming in the 15 minutes that you have for a conference. And I know we have to try and get those conferences in, and, and we have a short window and a short time to do it, but I wish that especially maybe the first time that they were getting it, that they would have been a little bit longer with more of an explanation. Because even when I knew what I was going to get, when you're sitting, when I was sitting there with it, being my child and actually trying to comprehend where he was on all of it, it was very overwhelming. So, I can imagine that other parents, once you get home and you see it, you probably have so many questions, and then these teachers are probably getting inundated with all these emails or phone calls, whereas if the conference was maybe a little bit longer, or maybe there was even something beforehand, similar to like a PTA meeting, where they explain one and walk the, all the parents that are interested in it through one, it might help then, because I can imagine those teachers then, having just done all this work for conferences, done all the conferences, and now all of a sudden, they're getting more questions. Because once you get home and you actually have an hour or so, really, is what it would take to sit down and look at it, there's a lot more questions and a lot more information that you're probably going to want to get, and that's a lot of time, when you're talking even, you know, 20 students, that's a lot of time then that those teachers have to then try and go back and do all of that after that.
Yeah, and, I mean, I, I too am a parent in the system, and I experienced the same 15-minute, you know, kind of, here's what's going on, and you get this long document, and it's a lot to digest, and really, at the end of the day, what you really want is to talk to the teacher anyways. And so, I, that's part, and I'll say, our teachers have been incredible at finding ways to try to communicate in front of, and they've been learning from each other. And so, there are many teachers that would set up an iPad outside of their classroom with the video from the district that kind of explained the, the progress report. So, when you first show up, you can, in Little Sciences, press play. So, you walk in knowing this is what you're going to get, or they'll have examples sitting out and, outside of their classrooms. And so, I think what, what, what you're probably experiencing is the same thing I am, is that as teachers are new to this, it is hard, it is complicated, and there's a lot to explain. As we've moved forward, our kindergarten teachers now are pretty accustomed to it because this will be their third year of doing this. And so, it's a little bit of a different conversation for them as we move forward. Hopefully, the same thing happens. I'll also say, this is another reason why, and thank you again for the, the 2019-20 calendar has two additional days in it of conference prep time for our teachers, where they are going to have more time to get, where the kids don't come to school, to get ready for those very important meetings with families. And so, we're recognizing the time commitment that comes with this, and, and hopefully, that leads to a better conference session that gives you more detailed information, so.
Action step one, one overall question, so, all of the priorities, all of the goals had changes to them, so there were, there were people who made this thing, asked, are we, do we have plans to be able to get out what the changes are that we made, how their feedbacks are reflected in, so my school's statements are, Ed's school's statements are, both statements that we keep, so that they're seeing, okay, I looked at what we made, I got your feedback, so they have, they value, which probably others show.
Well, one of the things we can do after approval, and we post these documents, is, is send out to the committee, here are the documents that were approved, and your input is reflected, and we can, we've highlighted the specifics, we could go look at, this is what it meant, your feedback, you should see it here, and that, thank you for the participation. I think that, that is the way we can do that, and let them know that it was valuable, their time was meaningful to us. And as we keep going, I want them to be, be the accountability measure that, that it's a, it really makes us be in our best game, so to speak, to get through, because we want them to do exactly the type of questions to say, tell me a little bit more about this because I'm not sure. So, yes, we can do that.
All right. All right, so, we will entertain a motion to approve our strategic plan priorities for each of 19. Moved by Pat, second by Katie, if there is no further discussion. All of them favor say aye. Any opposed? Any carries? Thank you very much. 11.0 reports and comments, 11.1 is our superintendent. The other superintendent is with...
Great. It's a fun week because it's the first week of school, so I'd like to report on some general observations and feedback about the work, first week of school, and then give you a construction update, because we're completing a number of projects, as, as you know, in new schools that are coming online. But I'd like to start with Shelley and, and her team have put together a welcome back and, and a, a beginning of the year video that I'd like to show you, and start there.
So, I think the message there are the smiles, this has been a really positive start to this school year for both staff and students. So, in general, as you know, we did not convene the large back-to-school event that Eastridge and all of our employees into here from me and others to start the year. And part of that was thinking about personalization and feedback, and how difficult it is to get ready, and all the things that people have to do, our teachers particularly, when they come back at the beginning of the year, and then all the people who work year-round, it's a culmination of all the work to get this in place. So, we, we did not have that event. We worked as, as cabinet members to be out in buildings and personalize that by trying to touch base with folks, many individual conversations that we could have, and also being in front of departments and schools, activities to welcome them back on a personal level. And I've heard great feedback from our staff, feeling like this was the best start because I had time to get ready, we also had great training to reconnect, and it just felt different. And schools also, and department leaders also worked hard to give people a little bit more time during that workshop week and that first week back to be prepared. So, that has been really positive. So, coming into the school day on Monday, I started my day out at, at New Wayo's front terrace, and I'll talk a little bit about that construction project, and then went over to Oldman. So, I was able to talk to a number of kids, ask, like, one, how do you like the school? And two, are you happy to be back at school? So, I had overall positive reactions, and I think there was, it was a little gender skewed. Many of our middle school girls were happy to be back, some of our middle school boys were not, but they were very happy with the, the school and the natural light. So, it was really fun to talk to, and in speaking with principals, they've been very positive about the start. So, a couple of... So a couple of comments. And I should tell you, we welcomed 1,800, I mean 18,673 kids this year. So we continue to grow and that's our largest start of the beginning of our first day and which we expected to grow, but that's really exciting. And some comments and personal comments. One, Joni at Oldman, Joni Hegibach. She said, personally, this has been my best first day ever. And she capitalized that as an administrator. And she said, I'm not kidding. Student feedback has been two thumbs up. Families are smiling, teachers are happy. And there's the typical challenges with a new school as you finish that we've got punch lists to go through and things that we're not sure, where did this go or whatever, but it's been really positive. And I felt that too, talking to staff. Cynthia at Newavis-Fronteras, as you know, they now have their own school. That's been a long process. Those who did that unfortunately, we approved our immersion program. They've been sharing in the school and that has been really difficult over the last couple of years just in space. They got along very well. It's wonderfully together, but spaced. And my, I should say that my very first meeting seven summers ago, I think it was July 2nd, I think it started July 1st with the newest parents. And they said, we'd like you to know that space is a problem and can you tell us what you're thinking in the school for us? So I'm so happy to have that school open. And Cynthia, what she said is the start of school at Newavis-Fronteras, Spanish immersion school, has been pretty amazing. So many wonderful people have come together to make the transition of the new Newavis to success. Our goal this year is to have a warm and welcoming school where students feel connected and personalized and personalize each student's education. The list could go on and on, but here are some highlights. We had our open house for parents and welcomed all family the first hour before we started school. We did that and I was there with Julie and Shelley and a number of our PTO presence. We did that before because we were last-minute construction cleaning all the way through Sunday. And so we did the open house then and it was really wonderful and I met a lot of parents. They were very excited and pleased as well. The PTSO provided balloons, donuts and coffee. Our new space was done on time and it's really just beautiful. The playground is superb. If you have a chance to get up, the playground is beautiful and it's amazing. There must be 20 inches of chips. And I thought at first, how are the kids going to navigate that? But it packs down and it has a very soft surface. And the teachers and staff and the principal are super positive and happy. So I want to thank a few people as far as construction because with all construction projects, there's really a last-minute rush and a week before we're ready to open school or preparing, it doesn't look like it's going to get done. So one, I want to thank Mike Vogel and Kwame. They did a lot of back, behind-the-scenes work to work with our architects and our construction superintendents and at the construction meetings to keep moving along. And if Mike wasn't ready to retire with all the construction we did, we did the last year in the summer, I think he has set, Kwame was outstanding. I also want to thank Julie and the work she did to help Joni and Joni Hegibach at Oldman. There was so much to do last year. And if you remember when we opened Eastridge, we had people full-time working on that for two years. And Joni and Julie with teams did that all while they had their other positions in place. And it's a astronomical task and I am so impressed with the way they got that done. And I want to thank Julie here and Joni. And Joni was with her sister and relatives cleaning at night, just doing everything that she could to get ready, just to help everybody out. And so we asked a lot of our leaders this year that had construction and they really did an amazing job. Cynthia at Newavis, if you would have been there two weeks ago, I would have, we would have been able to hold it. And she again, if was there, twelve weekends at night, working with her staff to do all the things that they could place. Carrie Lopez had, as you know, the large middle school wing that again takes, as they are leading a building, they're also in those construction meetings, picking out colors, going to all the furniture. And it is a second full-time job as you get through. Those are our three big projects. But we also had walls redone at Woodbury High School and all summer. That's what Sarah Sorenson Wagner was involved with in construction. At Lake, we had new flooring, paving, HVAC adjustments, making parking lots. And so all of our principals have done a phenomenal job. And then finally, Kwame and Michelle Smith. Michelle Smith is our assistant, or our facilities director that oversees our custodial staff. She and about seven folks were at Newavis-Fronteras on Saturday and Sunday cleaning and working with some professional builders there to make sure the building was completely ready to go. And so they, Michelle has been outstanding and all of our custodial staff through the construction project. So I can't say enough about the work they did and we can't thank them enough because we don't even know how many hours they clean outside of their normal data to get us to where we are. So it's been exciting. So a real quick update on all these projects. Oldman, we were at the punch list stage. So there's a number of things to be completed with the current punch list now. And the finished work, the landscaping and seating work continues with an expected completion date of September 14. Painting in canopy columns and insulation of bike routes, rags are scheduled to occur in the next few days. We do have that canopy process. So now we have a long drop-off for parents that many cars can be under the canopy so it won't be in the weather when it's raining and it dropped out front and it really expedites the dropping that long. On Newavis-Fronteras, contractors and district staff, as I said, worked throughout Labor Day weekend to complete Phase One work of the cleaning and opening of the school. Work on the school interior will continue when the school is not in session to complete the punch list items and get a jumpstart on Phase Three to complete, which is scheduled for the summer of 2019. Phase Two work, which is consisting of construction of the new administrative area, the new kitchen, custodial services portion of the school is underway with footings and foundations currently being constructed. Construction of the new portions of the school is slated for completion in late May of 2019. And then Phase Three work, including renovation of seven additional classrooms, replacement of full HVAC system and roofing. The entire building will take place next summer. So Mike pointed out that we only are 25% done with what the work that's going to happen at Newavis to complete and we're working on it throughout the year. Woodbury Middle School, that classroom addition and the media center renovation, the orchestra room upgrade and lighting upgrades are all complete. The kitchen and serving area construction is complete and contractors are working to remedy some of the outstanding issues with kitchen equipment that came in and wasn't functioning right away. Discussions are ongoing on some further security enhancements in the new classroom units as we now are living in it and taking it to the best. As I mentioned, Woodbury High School had 17 classrooms and two teacher workrooms this summer, as was the main office. It was remodeled to take down and replace what were called demountable walls, but they're temporary walls. And they only went right above the ceiling panels. So sound was a real difficult issue. Sarah Sorenson Wagner's office, she was in a social studies room basically when the lesson was going on as the sound came right through and classrooms. And so now they were all replaced with firman sheet rock walls extending to the building deck. So there's a soundproofing. And Sarah Sorenson Wagner reports that there is a substantial improvement in noise reduction and carryover between classrooms and improved regulation of the heating and cooling. We also installed new bleachers in the gym area over the summer and the bleachers she, Sarah said, they're awesome and they include a handicap accessible seating and handrails to navigate the stairs for safety. We had a lot of parking lot reconstruction and resurfacing. Parking lots, the resurfacing and changes that occurred at the program center, at Lake Middle School, at Oldman Elementary, Hillside Elementary this summer. Changes in traffic flow are most noticeable at the program center. As you know, we had, we have joint partnership with, part of that parking lot with a hotel and we have semis that come in sometimes at night. So there's new islands and new flow in and out to protect areas of the parking lot where semi should be parked and to get the folks that can mount. And then at Lake Middle School, you go to Lake Middle School, it's now a bit like an airport. You go in, it's signage on there. You go all over and there's, it's really wonderful for the drop-off and the buses to come in. And then Royal Oaks in Oldman, both schools received new windows and exterior doors this summer, new interior classroom doors and new student lockers. The improvements that greatly enhanced the aesthetics of the school will result in significant reductions in energy consumption. And finally, Cottage Grove Middle School, the ventilation, the ventilation system in the pool was replaced this summer. And new 15-foot wide student, it says foot, each lockers were installed, 15-foot wide lockers. That is spacious, yes. You could have the whole freshman class. And they were 12 inches wide before, so they had the new lockers and floor and replaced in one deposit. We'll continue to do that. So it was an amazing summer for our construction projects and all is completed. So we're so excited about the year and we're off to a good start.
Thank you. 11.2 is board reports. Do you want to start, Pat?
So last week I took over Oldman Middle School and tomorrow I'll be attending the MSU. Next week I'll be attending Phase, Phase Two.
I also toured Oldman last week with the board members and Todd, Julie, the construction staff. Doing all sorts of things, probably while we're on there, we really schedule hours because it's like six o'clock at night. And I, last week we recorded Matt Ted and I'm to meet with Nick. I knew first of all, I was a former student of the school and Ryan, one of our capability measures and one period of alternative learning school, which was really, really interesting and helped me kind of think about the guidance that our schools are receiving about how to do better for our students and how to do better overall, general, on school improvement. We had back-to-school right after, we had my daughter's school, which is always exciting. And I spent part of the first day of school in the morning there at her school, which was really nice. And it was great to see all the kids and staff excited to be back and was delivering this program to those, like star band and some gymnastics team and some community education there and dance team and the robotics team. They had a robotic couch. My daughter loved it, coolest thing ever. So that was really great to see the staff and see them and how well we were represented in that and how responsive they were as their students.
We started hosting an exchange student from Ton and he, I told him our budget's about 250 million and that's one of their DDPs. So all of you are doing amazing work, the size of, come on, the size of a country. And that's how I feel tonight. I'm just like, oh my gosh, you're, which is kind of amazing. And I'm really proud and thank all of you for the leadership because all of this only happens because of all the leadership to lay your friends to the table. It was, it's an emotional week when you think of the buildings. And I was telling kids, maybe my friends, students, learning about democracy. They have a 10-year-old democracy, a republic, a monarchy, that we won by five votes. Five votes. Every time I see these schools, you know, at Oldman and Newavis is, I think, five votes. Was amazing. And so for our general public to see the really amazing work that has been done with the resources in our community, it's just still very overwhelming, personally exciting. So thank you to all of you for everything. I also agreed to serve on the legislative committee for AMST, so that'll be fun. Kate said she wants to serve on the committee. We kind of left out the part that being serving on the board and the executive committee as well for the next three years. But, so there we go.
It's like Standards-Based grading.
So, but the, attended the legislative executive committee with this fabulous group of people in our district. So it's really fun to see what we can bring to bear to support our own district and having a voice on that. It's really exciting. So, and dropping my own youngest son, which is stuck in the, and so far, so good.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, the Citizens, that's a good advisory committee. They chaired at our last board meeting about insurance. We've already approved that. And Keith, I just want to let you know, one who drives by the district programs center every morning who's complained about the semis there ever since the park, I have not seen a semi yet. And there's even actually parking stalls for them, but they're not able to leverage it. So I think we've solved that issue with the semis. But the one I want to share, and I know to my board colleagues, I was probably like a proud as board member. I just, I was at the state fair. And you know, everybody's been to state fair, they have the parade that goes through the state fairgrounds. So my wife and I just got to this one spot and like, oh, great, the parade just started. It was a perfect time to watch. You know how proud it was to have our South Washington County band leading the parade? It was awesome. And then what made it even special was there were two ladies in front of me and they didn't know who I was. And the lady was telling this other lady, she goes, you know something? I got to tell you something about this band. That's three high schools I came together. And I'm like, that's pretty incredible that she knew that. But I, you know, and I introduced myself and we had a nice discussion. She said, you're the envy of a lot of schools. Now, first of all, now the size. And I said, yeah, that's what's so cool about it. It started so small and now it's grown. But honestly, we got on the way and the kids figured it out. They were the ones that did it. They were the ones that brought that band together. They're the ones that picked their T-shirts out of there. I mean, it was really neat to see them in action and the crowd was pretty enthusiastic as they came down and played. And they did just a fantastic job. I know, the minute I saw it, I took pictures, sent it to my colleagues. I said, I'm just a prop board member right now. This is really a cool thing to see.
Last week I was at Oldman for the seventh and eighth grade, eighth grade. And so I kind of, you know, took some time to step back and listen to kids and parents. And it was overall positive. There were a lot of parents, a lot of kids coming in at one time, but it didn't feel crowded. And I think that was the best thing is it didn't feel like you were in a small space with a lot of people because it's just the way, the way everything flows and even how the lockers are set up at their A goal and how everything is kind of by the pot to go, seventh grade in one, you're the eighth grade in one. And they do kind of mix and sing to a little bit because my eighth grader kind of class is the seventh grade pot. But it's so easy that you're not having to go all out and around and just seeing how it followed with actual people there was nice. I was slightly disappointed in my daughter when I was all excited to go to Oldman. She's like, how was it? She's like, it's a school. Okay, but I mean, I guess that's kind of a good thing in a way because it's like this, you know, it went on and it wasn't overwhelming. It wasn't like, oh, this was formal or this was harder, you know, all of that kind of stuff. So that was, that was an interesting experience and then having a child there is kind of cool. Just have seen it come so far and like you said, the five votes and sitting on that and being through the recall and all that and just knowing that it was so close to not happening and to see it live in Oldman is great.
Okay. Oh, see, yeah. I also toured Oldman and the amazing thing that I found, if I were a student, I'd be in that lunchroom and that swimming pool. Oh my God. Then I'd go over to the exercise place and then I'd be ready to go home. But it was amazing, I thought, to be a student in that environment is just, oh my God, awesome. If my students, we've been in school for three weeks now and I'm just like crazy. They would say, we need that here. So I'm not even bringing them with me. The city of, I'll be meeting with the city of Woodbury, I think that's on the 14th. And I look forward to working with my little children over there on the climate and culture committee. And I've already had people in the community approach me about serving on there. I just, oh, it's exciting. So that's it for Sharon. So, that's it for Sharon.
All right. So, I was at the, I wanted to see the facility's already being used, they had diving going on, so that was kind of neat to see them at our new pool and the diving well, which is awesome, so. And then I would need to go over to where I live to figure out how to cornell those because I am going back to get my master's degree, so.
That started January, so I'm excited. All right, twelve point oh, sorry.
One thing I was remiss on, thank you, is Bob and his department, along with the two hundred phone calls, what he did to get the construction going in Oldman, Sue Pogenowski and our, our purchasing, all those orders that go in goes through one person, and there's many other people, but also the teachers, they all came in both of these new schools, and had to unpack on their own and get their classrooms set up, and in talking with them, that was part of this, this school year, and we're excited, and, and so, there's many more other people that got our schools to that point, but I want to make sure to finish the evening without mentioning our staff and the other folks involved.
Twelve point oh, future meeting dates, twelve point one is September twentieth, which is a regular board meeting, and then October fourth is a regular board meeting. So, with that, we are.